So now, thank you very much. I'll call to order the special meeting of Glendale City Council. And we'll call please.
Councilmember Friedman, Garpetian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here. And your report?
The agenda for the June 7, 2016, special public meeting of the city council is posted on Thursday, June 2, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
One Director of Community Development regarding 420, 424, and 500 East Colorado Street, and 423 East Elk Avenue, new medical office project. One A, motion approving Stage 1, and two, design. One B, resolution approving general plan map amendment. One C, introduction of ordinance to change the zoning and amend the zoning map. One D, introduction of ordinance to amend downtown specific plan maps.
Mr. Chella?
Yes, ma'am. We are pleased to present to you a new project that really will help further economic activity in town. What we are seeing, especially with our three hospitals continuing to grow and diversify, is a need for additional medical office building space in town. And to the extent we're able to utilize existing land uses in the DSP, and in this case, a piece of property that straddles the DSP, the Downtown Specific Plan, we are hopefully going to present to you a project that meets with your liking. Because it is a DSP project, as was read by the city clerk, the council acts as the design review, so the applicant has requested Stage 1 and 2 design. And as I've mentioned previously, because the property straddles the DSP, we're asking for your consideration of a zoning amendment. So with that, we'll have the hardest-working senior planner in CDD, Viliya Zemetit, has come forward and present the project to you. Viliya?
Thank you, Mr. Chella, for the very thorough introduction. Mayor Devine, councilmembers. As was just stated, this is a project located on the south side of Colorado, just west of Glendale Boulevard. It is a four-story, 60-foot-high, primarily medical office with ground-floor retail building. And the project itself is approximately 39,000 square feet. I have a PowerPoint presentation that will show. You currently on the screen is the project site. It consists of four lots, all of which are under the same ownership. Three of those lots front East Colorado Street, which would be 420, 424, and 500 East Colorado. There is a lot to the rear, addressed as 423 East Elk. That particular lot has been used since 1964 as a surface parking lot in the multifamily residential zone for those businesses fronting Colorado. Again, highlighted in red is that surface parking lot that is currently zoned R1650, that is being proposed to be rezoned to the DSP East Broadway District. And you'll note here DSP East Broadway spans across Colorado to Glendale Avenue and proceeds south down to Elk. You have the medium-high-density residential R1650 zone, which basically ends at the back of the lots fronting Glendale Avenue. And so you'll notice here the project site outlined in yellow, and the lot that is to be rezoned. So the lot that is to be rezoned essentially has DSP East Broadway on two of its sides. And so it would just be incorporated into the downtown specific plan area. Again, this is a map that was included in your staff report, showing the outline of the project site. And in hatch marked would be the surface parking lot to be rezoned. On the screen before you now would be the site plan. You'll notice this is essentially showing you the surface parking lot that is to remain. Underneath the surface parking lot, there will be two levels of subterranean garage, constructed for a total of 156 onsite parking spaces. That is in compliance with our zoning code standards for medical and retail uses. There is a driveway not only on Colorado Street, but they will also be utilizing the same driveway on Elk Avenue. The parking lot will be improved with additional landscaping per code, as well as screening walls that are currently not in compliance with the standards. Here again, you'll see the roof plan showing that the building essentially spans the three lots fronting Colorado Street, with a surface parking lot to the rear. Here you'll see the perspective rendering of the project looking southeast towards the project. The project complies with all of the zoning standards for the DSP East Broadway District. It provides ample open space. The project actually provides almost twice the amount of open space required by code, and quite a bit of significant landscaping. There are common patios, not only at the front of the lot, of the L-shaped building, but also to the rear for use by the commercial employees. The building itself, as you'll notice, is designed in a very contemporary, modern style. It has high-quality finishes, architectural details. Staff has prepared a design memo from the Urban Design Studios, in conjunction with the Urban Design Studio staff. We went through all the bullet points in the Downtown Specific Plan design guidelines, and this project complies with all of those design guideline standards. And you'll note that that design, Urban Design Studio memo, was included as an exhibit to your staff report. Here you'll see the front elevation, front facing Colorado Street. And again, this is an aerial perspective, a bird's-eye view of the building on Colorado, with that surface parking lot to be refinished at the rear fronting Elk. Before you today, obviously, are four items. One would be to acknowledge, or in this case, five with the acknowledgement, that is, of the DSP addendum for the EIR. The four items that you would need to act on, in addition to acknowledging the addendum to the Downtown Specific Plan EIR that was prepared by the environmental consultant, would be to approve the resolution for the proposed general plan amendment, to introduce the ordinance approving the citywide zoning amendment for the, just for that surface parking lot at 423 East Elk, to introduce the ordinance to approve the amendments to all of the Downtown Specific Plan maps, because the maps themselves are an outline, so you would need to amend all of those Downtown Specific Plan maps. And finally, to approve the combined Stage 1 and 2 design. That concludes the staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, and I know that the full project team is in the audience as well.
And I have... Oh, it isn't open hearing? Okay. I'm sorry. I'll open the hearing, and I have two cards. So shall we take those? Rodney Khan?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located on Brand Boulevard, here in the city of Glendale. We are proposing to construct a new medical office building in the downtown area. And that is significant, because over the years, we've lost medical office buildings in the downtown area. So this will be a welcome addition. The site currently is occupied by commercial land uses. And if you've been out to the site, there's a carpet store, there's a paint store, there's a commercial parking lot along Elk. And something I wanted to add to Ms. Zemetit's presentation. The four lots, three of which are on Colorado Street, the fourth on Elk. Back in 1964, a use variance was granted for that lot on Elk to be used for commercial purposes, to be used as a commercial parking lot. So it makes sense, at least to us it did, to look at it and say, what would be the appropriate zoning for this site? Well, since it's all under common ownership, we're to the north, to the east, and to the northwest under the DSP plan. As I mentioned at the planning commission, I originally thought that this site should have been incorporated in the DSP when it was originally drawn, because to me, that would make a lot of sense. Nevertheless, we're here requesting that. So it will be a continuation of the commercial use for the property. As was mentioned, they're proposing a medical office building, ground floor, retail, and lobby. We also have second, third, and fourth floors of medical offices. Our project, as designed, we actually have a few extra parking spaces over and above what the code requires. This allows us some flexibility for the ground floor retail. If we wanted to bring in additional medical on that floor, or some type of café, or something along those lines, we have the additional parking to be able to do that as well. With me today, I have the property owner's representative. We have our architect, we have our traffic engineer. I'd like to step aside now and have our architect walk you through the design of the building. Thank you very much.
Sokol Markusi?
Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, and members of the council. I'm Sokol Markusi with Alajja and Markusi Architects. I'm sure each one of you have the same brochure that I have on the screen, but I'm not sure if you would want me to just go extensively go through all the pages, or if you have specific questions, I'd be able to answer them.
Sokol, could you talk about the materials maybe for the council?
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, as Viliya explained, you know, we, the project is supposed to be 39,000, to be exactly 39,067 square feet. And it's over a two-level subterranean garage, which is accessed internally. So you have a driveway that is from Colorado Street, and one from Elk. And then you go to the middle of the site, and from... What is this? Okay, yeah. Yes, on the right side of the screen is Colorado, the west is Elk. I mean, the left is Elk. So you enter Colorado Street from Colorado, and then there's a two-way ramp that takes you down to the lower levels of the subterranean, which is, takes practically the entire site. And the project requires approximately 150... 148 parking. We have 156. Eight parkings over and above what is required.
You have any tandem parking there? You don't do?
No, all of them are, yeah, standard parking. We have provided the required number of accessible parking stalls as well for the disabled. The first floor, primarily, we have, at this point, we're envisioning retail, more conducive to the type of operation that the building will have, either medical-related, or something like a café, or a combination of the two. You know, it could be pharmacy. And we have flexibility enough, in terms of number of parking, where we could provide a certain portion of this retail as a café or a... The floors, the floors, each, on the first, second, and third floor, we have approximately 10,400 square feet. And the first floor, about 8,400 square feet, close to, so it adds up to 39,067. A bank of elevators, two of them are accessed from the lowest level of parking all the way to the fourth floor. In addition to that, we have required stairwell exits that takes you to the outside. All the utility, the air conditioning system is on the rooftop, and it's screened by parapets that are high enough that will screen all the air conditioning. The materials used on the exterior facades are a combination of porcelain tile or stone, which will simulate the stone finish. At this point, it's a budget, you know, we have, if we can make it, we'll use the stone. If not, we'll go to porcelain. But we want to have that, this look of the stone on the exterior. Then we have glazing, which is all clear, see-through, dual glazing for the tenant's space. And then we have, for shading and architectural features, we have composite metal paneling, which is projected above the glazing system for shading. And at different locations, they become part of the architecture features.
But I think, wanted to make sure the council was aware, and you can see right there at the materials, the veneer cladding, when you look at the rendering, until unless you get that far into the presentation, some folks might mistake the building material as split-faced block or something else. Rather, as Sokol points out, this will be either a stone or porcelain clad. So it will have a very high-end look, as opposed to just a CMU building.
Yes, and the glazing feature, you know, the lobby is more pronounced by means of horizontal fins that come out about a foot to put emphasis on the entry, and entry lobby. And then we have two types of glazing system. One is the storefront, which has the, you know, storefront mullions and styles, they're all exposed, so you could see the framing. And the other type is the butt joint, which is happening on the projected portions of the building. Unfortunately, the pointer doesn't show, yeah, the projected portions of the... Yeah. So... Yeah, the pointer, anyway, the projected portion of the glazing is butt joint, so you don't see any frame. It's more of a sculptural piece that comes out of the building. As I said, the system is dual-glazed with low-E glazing. Wherever we have stone cladding, it's wrapped around the corners, so as if there's a continuous, you know, the continuity of the stone is at the corners. And then we have the metal canopy system, which is, as I said, it's composite metal, and projects over glazed areas for shade and architectural feature. This is the corner of the building, again, same thing. And we have a combination of terraces and balconies, which they all take glass railing, as shown in this detail. This is a lighting diagram, or a lighting plan, shows how the building and the site is lighted at night. We have a combination of steplights for the driveways. We have sconces for the building walls, that is number one on the screen. We have recessed lighting, number two, which is basically underneath the canopies. We have strip lighting, number three, which occurs at the glazed canopy in the building entrance, which shows as number three. And number, number four is steplight, as I mentioned. Number five is actually accent uplight lighting, where we have the uppermost projected canopies, the glaze, that come above the glazing. Above that, we have these number five strip lighting, which lights up the metal parapets up above.
Now, can I ask a question? At night, is the lighting so that it's not intrusive to the neighbors, the residents on the other side?
Yes, we have, this is a night shot. Primarily, the building is lit from the, where it's exposed to the Colorado Street.
Okay.
At the rear, if you look at the plan, there's hardly any. We have, at the driveway ramp to the lower levels, we have these sconces, two of them, which light the, you know, the driveway ramp. And below that, we have garage general lighting. And then in addition to that, we have basically the recessed lighting, which is in the canopies, and facing the residential street. These are specs for the... And then with the landscaping, we've used, especially at the surface parking, we're using larger canopy trees for shade that, the strip to the east of the parking is at grade, so it gives the chance of these trees to grow large and be shade trees for, which will eventually shade most of the surface parking. In addition to that, we have up front on Colorado, we were using some pygmy palms and queen palms for accent. And all the low-level landscaping is, you know, drought-tolerant, low-water-usage plants. This is the planting palette. Mostly indigenous to California, and some of them that are brought from locations similar to California, Southern California, at weather. And then we have signage. The signage is minimal. We have storefront signs, and then we have building sign, and we have the directory sign. The storefront signs are installed with, they're actually freestanding. They are suspended from the ceiling of the canopy, building canopy. They're individual letters, individually lit. And when a tenant is moved, and some other tenant is there, we won't have that, the unsightly holes in the building. You will never see that. It's a track that these are hung from the track. This is the directory sign, or a monument sign, as we call it. It's right at the center, right behind the sidewalk when you enter the building, at the center of the building. And up on top is the building sign, which is called Pro Health Medical Building, which that would be... I guess if I bring the night light. It's right on the upper-left corner of the building. And the signage, you might not distinguish the lettering, but the yellowish light that hangs below the canopy at the first, above the first level, those are the store signs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there comments, questions? Councilman Sinanian?
So one of the, looking back at all the buildings that have been built in Glendale in the last few years, one thing that stands out in my mind is the setback, the sidewalks.
Right.
You know, we talk about 18-hour Glendale downtown, and I don't see how, in the long term, we're going to have that type of robust foot traffic and sort of, you know, happening streets with narrow, narrow sidewalks that we currently have on, especially adjacent to the new construction on Central and Brand. So I know this isn't quite that kind of a street, where, you know, it's not plastered with restaurants on left and right. But still, what's the width of the sidewalk? What do we have?
Yeah, first of all, in the circulation plan, this is recognized as more of a vehicular type of a street, but we have two types of setback.
I'm referring to Colorado.
Yes, yeah, Colorado, from curb to the closest surface wall of the building to the curb is 12 feet 4 inches. And then where the storefront is, we have another four and a half feet, so about, close to 14 and a half to 15 feet, where the storefront is. So that's the width of the sidewalk. And if you notice, the open area, we have these umbrellas and the canopy. That's where we could provide, you know, ceiling if, you know, that's where.
But I think, looking at your specific point, to the extent that, I want to say it's about a 10-foot actual sidewalk that you have to walk down on this part of the street, outside of a dedication that you would extend to all of the other businesses, it would look like a series of broken teeth, you know, pops and that, pops.
I realize that. I've thought about that, but, I mean, where do you start, right? At some point, you have to...
Where you, I would, and I think the place that you start is where you have a critical mass, where a lot of people will congregate and have an opportunity to walk. I think East Colorado is, as you point out, a far cry from the downtown proper.
True.
I think when you look at this street, it's still about getting people up and down the sidewalk as it exists today, and is likely to exist all the way to the Eagle Rock border, as opposed to what you see on Brand and Central. So I don't know, and I don't disagree with that. I think ultimately, we want to get to a point in the downtown where you have those broader sidewalks. I would think this one probably stays where it is, in terms of the opportunity cost for the buildings that you will build or not build, and then the cost to actually seek those dedications. I think what you have in terms of the 10 feet at this stretch is probably where you would stay, practically speaking. But your point's well taken, the downtown in particular. I agree, especially on Central, it'd be nicer to have much larger sidewalks.
Right, because the narrower the sidewalks, the more oppressive the massing of the building looks. It's just overwhelming.
And I think that's what Sokol points out, is that a big chunk of this building sets back, and I think they took that into consideration to some degree. But your point's very well taken, the downtown in particular.
Well, and my question, comment goes along with councilmember Sinanian's. That seems like a lot of hardscape right there. Is there any way that that can be softened? I know, I commend you for the amount of landscaping you have in the front there, but along the street side, is there any way that, I don't know if it would be pots or planting in the, I don't know, with the 10, 12-foot sidewalk, I don't know that you have a lot of room for trees. Although in one of the pictures, you did have a couple of palm trees. Were you planning on putting any kind of landscaping or trees there in front of the building?
Yes. Actually, there's, onsite, we have, we have trees in the planters, but the street will also allow us to have actually street trees. I'm not sure, the street trees that are there, I'm not sure if they were the best selection. They have this eucalyptus, which has no character, sorry to say, you know, but there's a chance to put street trees. And as I mentioned, you know, we have pulled the building. The DSP requires a 12-foot minimum from the face of the curb to the building.
And that is the issue. I want to stop you right there. If you want to have wider sidewalks, the setbacks are calculated from the edge of the curb.
Right.
So if you want to have a 10-foot setback, your two feet, and your sidewalk is 10 feet, you only have to go back two feet, because it's, I know we want to create this downtown, walking pedestrian-friendly environment, but when you calculate your setback from the curb, you're not going to have any setbacks on the property line. So that's why they're right up against it. That has to change. This has nothing to do, fortunately, this sidewalk is wider than the one on Wilson, for example, because when you have an eight-foot sidewalk and you have a tree, then you can't even get around it in a wheelchair. So I think that's something that we need to look into in the near future, which has nothing to do with the project. But calculating the setbacks from the curb, edge of the curb is the biggest issue. To create that, that...
Right, and to me, I mean, granted that that's the cause of why these sidewalks end up being so narrow. Bottom line is, they're narrow. You know, how you start measuring it, or where you start measuring it from. But again, I do concede that this is Colorado, it's East Colorado. It's not, you know, not middle of downtown Glendale. It's not meant for, it's not like a congregation area.
But it's the same zone.
The same zone. I know, but I'm saying for practical purposes.
Right, yeah, but it can still have some softening of the landscape, the appearance of the building is just...
I think what softens the landscape, and I'll say what compensates for these narrow sidewalks is the type of building that's designed here, which is glass building. It's light to sight.
You can see through it, right?
You don't, it's not massive. It's not like, you know, these panels and concrete, and which I think just, a lot of these new buildings that we've built in the last, I say "we," I didn't build it, but were built in Glendale, especially downtown, they're supposed to be modern buildings, but they really aren't. They're still, they're heavy-looking buildings. This one, if it ends up being what it looks like on the renderings, it looks light. I like that. I like the glass. It's just, it's not oppressive. I like that, I like the glass, it's just, it's not oppressive. Otherwise, it's just too much in Glendale nowadays. But the problem that we've had in the past is that the renderings that we see before projects approved, and what we see as the end product, the two don't correspond. I'm sure that's not going to be the case with this project, but I'm just saying, that has happened a lot.
The other thing I want to say about this is the fact that, I'm sure that the neighbors will be happy with the parking in the rear, that you're rehabbing that because it really is amass. My question is, does anyone else have a, I don't want to preempt. Councilmember Najarian, do you have any questions on the design?
I think it's a, and I usually don't like modern style, but I think the use of glass and the metal really makes it very unique, and the lighting as well, the evening shot looks very, very attractive. And of course, Colorado is one of our signature streets, Brand in Colorado, and I think those are the streets where this type of, this type of structure belongs. So that's my thoughts.
I agree. Can I go back to that issue that, you know, I raised, and then Councilmember Garpettin responded to, so they're in the same zone, the setbacks are the same, whether it's on Brand or on Colorado. Does that mean that the next project that comes in what we conventionally think of downtown Glendale, Brand, Central, that area, and it's the narrow sidewalk, and by right, that's the setback, and that's what they get, and we have nothing to say about it?
Well, you can change the DSP.
So in order for us to impact a single building, we would have to change the entire DSP?
Because the zoning impacts all of those businesses, all the properties.
Okay, so you know what, that's something I support. Let's look at that aspect and bring it back for us to consider.
Mr. Sinanian, in response, what we did is we looked at, what is the minimum standard you want in the downtown-specific plan area, and we set that at 12. We consciously did that. It's a pretty generous area, especially for a vehicular street. If you wanted to make those sidewalks, minimum sidewalk width bigger, we could do that. But you may then, as we pointed out before, you'll have the in-and-out and jagged until the whole thing.
And, you know what, I don't foresee in the next 500 years us demolishing all of Brand and evening the sidewalks out, so I think we're going to start with the jagged, and then as time passes, we're going to equalize all the buildings to the back end, not towards the sidewalks.
We will, we will make sure to include that specific discussion in South Glendale Plan, because DSP is located in the South Glendale Plan area.
And when is this coming to?
That'll be, you have three morning-to-afternoon study sessions upcoming in July and August.
Very good.
I was just going to, Mayor Devine, Councilmember Zarian, I'm Sinanian, I'm, sorry, Zarian.
He was thinking Zarian and Sinanian.
If I'm not mistaken, the staff can correct me, but I believe the areas where we have heavier foot traffic, this easement increases to 15 feet from the face of a curb, if I'm not mistaken.
Let me just inject something here.
True, no.
I think what we're saying is, it has nothing to do with one project. Overall, the way the setbacks are calculated, all the projects that are being built, they're right up against the property line. So that's one of the issues. And the ones that they have, they can't deliver their building, like the ones on Central, and they have landscaping underneath, those landscapings are not even usable because they are put into, they have a high landscape area, so they have a little retaining wall around it. So the idea of creating that pedestrian-friendly environment goes away when you have a 600-foot block of building that has no connection to the next street, there is no pass-through from this Central to Brand, for example, and the landscaping is the way that it's not usable, there is no shade area, there is no sitting area, there is no water feature, my favorite one, this one has it, I hope you get some water in there, because ours doesn't.
He's having difficulty...
City halls. We're going to let you turn it back on next week.
The issue that we have is, and this is a smaller property, it's not really wide, and you still have a sitting area up front, you still have a retail store, I don't know whether it would be, I don't know, a coffee shop or a pharmacy, it will still create that pedestrian environment. But what we're saying here, what I'm saying, you know, I can't speak on behalf of my councilmembers, is because I know you design many projects in downtown and everywhere else, for, in the future, for you to consider is, and everyone else to consider is, to have that true pedestrian-friendly environment mentality when you design it, because when there is no store, there is no retail in the bottom of these buildings, then that live-work and, that goes away. I understand they're saying that some of these stores may not work, but I don't know, and the E R would tell that, will indicate if it would work or not. But on the other hand, a project in this size, I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going to mention it here today, it's very difficult for us to approve a project based on these renderings. I can do it, I wasn't designing it for eight years, this is my line-up business, but what we hear from councilmembers, or some of the staff even, that we need to know it's going to look like this. This project is going to look good because I can tell by the glass and the different use of material, but we need to see a model. A project in this size should have a model to show the relationship with the neighboring properties. We need to have a material board, we need to have a color chart. I mean, on this page 20, it's, my only concern about this project is the CMU wall, it's not a CMU wall, it's something else, it's a veneer, or it's a, but even if you look at the renderings, it's different color in different pages, and it's very difficult to, for me to visualize how it's going to look like. If it's one of those smooth marble-looking material, I don't know which one it is, but I can't tell from that little picture as to what it is. Usually, a material board would be nice for this dyist to visualize at least, how is it going to look like, or a model that shows the real colors of it. Because, I got to tell you, I approved one project when I was on the board, and they showed me there's a flat rendering, the eye-level rendering with the building and the relationship to the next-door neighbor, it looked fine. I looked at it today to just refresh my memory, it looked fine, but it's on Verdugo and broadview, that big building, it's all glass, very nice on the corner, but when you drive down from Verdugo, from north to south, you see this big blank wall, big, huge blank wall, and I approved that project, I had to live with it. So, and I still get criticized because of that, and they are right. And there's a motorcycle dealership underneath, Al Shala, we go there once in a while, but when you drive down on Verdugo, you see this big blank wall, it did not show on the renderings, I couldn't tell because it came up when it was built. So my questions, I have a couple of questions for you.
May I address your...
Yes.
...defense wall issue? The fence wall is actually entirely, both faces are finished, it's a burnished block, that means the block, they take the block after it's cast, they take a grinder, and it's a matte finish, it's not shiny like marble, but you see the grain, but it's, it does look like burnished.
The grain or what? What kind of a...
You see, like in this case, that's the color of the CMU, which has...
CMU block, which is grinded and flattened, and it's not a split level.
It's like a sandblasted sort of a finish. Yes.
Right, I mean, that's what makes it a building veneer, that's what we were talking about earlier, is porcelain clad, stone clad. The wall is the CMU.
What I want to do, this is my comments, on page, let's see if I can find, page 8, on page 18.
All right.
On the east elevation, it shows the glass railing, your fourth note from left.
Yes.
And on the south elevation, it shows the same material, it says composite metal cladding. I don't know which is which, because they are the same material, I think, I don't know if it was a typo or it's, I'm reading it wrong. On the east elevation, the fourth note from the left, it says glass railing, and on the south elevation, this is your second note from right, it says composite metal cladding.
No, it's all...
It's the same.
Glass railing, it's glass railing, yes.
Sorry?
Glass railing.
Is our glass railing?
It might be a typo, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think what it is, is the line doesn't drop down far enough, yeah? I think that's...
I think the glass railing is on the first floor, those are the clads.
Right, exactly. The line doesn't come...
Yeah, the upper floors don't have balconies, basically.
Okay, yeah, it's glass railing, okay. The glass railings are in the bottom, those are the clads. What I want to ask is, I want to see that material. I don't have a problem with the mass and scale of this project, I think it's well-designed, but what I want to do is, because all three sides is going to be visible, from the Grand Avenue, there's just one-story flower shop and the parking lot, from Elk Street, you're going to see it, I want to see that material. I don't know if it's, how are we going to do this? Otherwise, we need to maybe introduce more of the, this composite material on the rear of the property as well. If you go to, if you go to Colorado's on page 8, the Colorado southeast view, this is a lot of, on the right-hand side, it's a lot of mass, and if you, I don't know if you can introduce some of that composite metal material or not to break it up, and I don't know how this finish is, to be honest with you, I can't visualize how this finish is going to be.
Actually, if we go to the page 18, that... The south elevation is facing some 120, 30 feet away from Elk, and it's facing, south-facing Elk. And I have used composite metal, you see where the break of the building mass is above the driveway, that's all glazing and composite metal. And where the punched area, where you see three bays of glazing with projected canopies, basically, it's all glass and composite metal. And the rest is the stone cladding that we have on other facades, so. And you see the wider mass, that's exit stair, that brings you, behind that is basically entirely the exit stair. Other than that, we have the, you know, the other, stone cladding happens at the corners of the building, so. And what, we might have a chance if a tenant, because we have a patio on the rear, if you...
So Sacco, just so we're clear, here is the, this is the glass railing where the cursor is there, right? This is the composite, composite over here, you can see it because of the shadow delineates it, and then the rest is the glass, is the glazing and the glass, yeah?
Correct.
The composite...
See right there where the cursor is, is the composite shading?
No, that's not it.
That's not the metal canopies?
The metal canopy is on, the composite metal cladding is the one on...
Down below, below.
Right above the garage.
Yeah, that's composite.
Right.
The stone.
Yeah, but these are, again, the flat renderings, if you look at the three perspective ones, it shows the mass of it. I, again, I think it's better to go through it today and make sure that it's not going to look like the other building, so, because this is on a prime corner, and the south elevation is very, east elevation is very visible, so is the south elevation, I think we need to make sure that, I can't visualize how this material is going to look like because I don't have a sample of it in front of me, but if you look at the, again, page 8, Colorado Street, south elevation, you see it. And the property line, the six-foot wall, is it just a regular cinder block?
As I said, it's a burnished finish, it's a CMU wall, which is burnished with the same burnished cap.
And is it along that wall that you're going to plant the trees? Is that the parking lot right there, on the left?
On, the one on the left.
On the left?
The one, to the left of our property line is Conroy Florist, which is their parking, and we have the fence wall right behind it, we have a six-foot setback where we have our side yard.
And there'll be landscaping there?
That's sitting entirely on the concrete deck, I mean, we have the subterranean garage below that. There is a chance to put potted plants.
Something to cover up the, yeah, that might help.
I mean, we like to have as much landscaping as possible, and there's so much that they want to do because they don't want to block all their storefront or the glass windows, but what I'm talking about is, I want, because I don't know that material, and I don't have one in front of me, I want to make sure that when we build this thing, we're not going to say, oh, I didn't know it's going to look like this. So I want staff, maybe, have you seen a block of it? Have you seen the material itself?
Oh, not for this. I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Thank you, Councilmember Garpettin, is, we would be able to go ahead and have them bring in the samples. We have seen the samples for other projects with the composite metal and the stone cladding, so we can actually work with the Urban Design Studio staff, Jay Platt was the representative from the Urban Design Studio staff, we'll make sure that it's of the highest quality material. Also, just to point out, since there is concern along the rear terrace, that based on the conceptual landscape plan, there are, Mayor Devine, there are four 24-inch box crepe myrtle trees proposed at that rear deck patio. So those would be typical size of 24-inch box, plus additional shrubs at lower scale. So there will be softening greenery on that rear patio, so. And that, it butts up against actually some auto, currently, some auto body shops that are on Glendale Avenue, so we don't have residential at that particular location at this time.
Yeah, but there are two apartment buildings next door to it, and from the parking lot to west on Elk, there are apartment buildings. Look, I like the design, I'm not trying to, but a project in this size, a material board, a color chart, you know, we have to have it from here on.
Can we, can I ask, can we make a motion to approve this design before he sees the textures and the materials?
Okay, well, yeah, yes, you can. Madam Mayor, I think the question is, do you want to just provide direction to staff consistent with what Mrs. Ematai has said, or do you want them, if you want to actually approve it, then it would have to come back? So, I think the recommendation we would have is to approve it with the recommendation that the additional modifications to those two elevations be made consistent with the council direction today.
I don't want it approving it today, I don't have a problem, but I'd like to see the material when they bring it back, if you don't mind.
I think the design is beautiful, and I have no objections to the design, as long as we get the certain landscaping and that he's... I have questions about parking, should I ask that?
Before you go on, just a note of clarification, Mr. Garpettin, this is a final approval, stage one and two, so it won't be coming back to the council? That's why we're suggesting that, that's why we're suggesting that you approve with the direction for staff to ensure that your suggestions, your conditions are being implemented.
No, I understand that, I appreciate that. That would be my motion after our comments are done, but they're going to bring this material sometime down. I mean, a project like this, we need to have a material board, even when the planning wants to go finish, look at the finished project to approve it, they have to have something, some sample to say, okay, this was the material, and they used the material that was approved.
Certainly, what we can do is invite councilmembers to go look at the materials as they come into the design studio and avail yourself...
That's all I'm asking, I like to see the material.
Because in the past, we bring, even in a different organization, you bring material boards, and you'll have a piece of that porcelain cladding, you know, a little bit bigger than my phone, and then the response generally is, well, I really can't tell what that's going to look like on a building because it's just a brick size. And so I think you can get an idea if you want to touch it and feel, I mean, the point being that bringing it here doesn't necessarily, in such a formal setting, give you the comfort that you're looking for, as opposed to going into the office, looking at it, spending however much time you need on it, pour water on it, see what it looks like, whatever you want to do, that's done much, much more conveniently and much better, I think, for your decision-making ability, if you go to the studio or we bring it into the office, as opposed to the hearing.
Well, in that case, then we should have that chance to look at the material before it comes to the board.
Absolutely.
I mean, before it comes to council, because...
Yeah, I mean, to the extent we schedule this...
Material board helps a lot, for me, I don't know about my fellow councilmembers, but a project this size, you can't approve it just based on an eight-and-a-half by 14, or 11 by 14 plans. You need to have a model, and from here, I'm going to ask for it, a model for a project this size, not just this project overall, and material board and color chart, so we know what we're approving, because the colors are even... so we know what we're approving, because the colors are even different. It comes out different depending on your printer, when you print 20 pages, so.
Yeah, I have, I have my traffic engineer on board, if you'd like to have questions.
Okay, I just have two, two quick questions on the parking.
Are the questions for staff or for the applicant?
Pardon?
Questions for the staff or the applicant?
Probably for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jano Bagdian, JB Associates.
Thank you. My question, I want to make sure that there's no problems on Elk as far as parking. The parking lot that is in existence and is going to be redone, is that going to be free parking for the people that use the building I'm talking about, not...
Yes, I believe that...
I just want to make sure there's not an overflow of parking on Elk that caused a problem.
Yes, the parking will be free for the employees and the residents, and the visitors to the medical facility.
Yes, okay, and the subterranean parking as well?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. That's it, that's it, thank you.
I have one more question for the architect.
Okay.
The garage door, is there a door? Is it, is it going to be locked at night, secured at night?
The, the subterranean has, will have a roll-up gate, which will close, and we also have, we also have gates at Elk, but on Colorado, there will be right, I guess, right below the metal cladding canopy, there'll be a drop-down which will close that area. But the open space will remain open.
No, I understand, the gate...
Yes, the gate will close the building entirely.
Do you have a design for it, or it's going to come in?
I'll, I'll bring that as well for you to see. It's, it's a roll-up, I'm sorry, it's a roll-up aluminum...
That's okay, when you, when you bring, I'll...
I'll bring that. I want, I'm not sure if I'll be able to bring a sample, but I'll bring you a picture of what it looks like, because they won't give me a sample of that gate.
Sample of the garage door, okay.
No, not the gate, I understand, of course. I thought you were talking about the veneer.
Oh, no, no, the veneer, I'll bring all the materials...
Maybe you can bring the entire gate, so we can...
Yes, but, but yeah, it's aluminum, which in the finish is the same as my fenestration, the aluminum, the, anodized aluminum, yes.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you. So, do we have a motion then, or can we get a motion for approving stage one and two design with conditions?
I'll move on.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Friedman, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, yes. And now the resolution approving the general plan map development. Do we have comments, questions, the change in zoning?
No, just move the item.
Move the resolution. Roll call, please.
This is 1B.
1B.
Councilman Friedman, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, and introduction of the ordinances, 3 and 4?
I'll introduce...
Just one at a time, please.
Oh, one at a time?
I'll introduce at 1C.
Second.
Well, I'll introduce at 1D.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item?
Adjournment?
And we shall have the building. Adjournment, does it have a motion?
Some move, second.
A second, okay. Moving on.